Good evening. I'll call the meeting of October 27, 2025 to order at 6:30 PM. Okay? Is this better?
Yeah!
Let the record reflect that all council, councilors are present. Madam Mayor McVeil will be joining us later this evening. In terms of the admin, Emily Cole Prescott is also present. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Under general, this evening, we have two opportunities to recognize outstanding service. The first item is the Extra Mile Proclamation. Whereas Saco is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service; and whereas Saco is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contributions to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to the individual ambitions, family, friends, and community; and whereas Saco is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of the community; and whereas Saco acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2025. Now therefore, on behalf of Jody L. McVeil, Mayor of Saco, Maine, do hereby proclaim that November 1, 2025 to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time to not only go the extra mile in his or her own effort, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make those, their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. Signed this 27th day of October, 2025, by the Mayor of the City of Saco, Maine, Jody L. McVeil. We also have the award for recognition. Misty Hewle has gone the extra mile and has been chosen as Saco's Extra Mile Hero of 2025. Misty has been helping with Harbor Fest since the reigniting of the festival began. From finding sponsors in fundraising to make beautiful, one-of-a-kind raffle baskets, her event and game ideas for the festival, Life Size Candy Land, as one example, has helped shape the festival to the successful and fun event it has become for all to enjoy. From helping with her husband's business, taking care of her family, or fundraising for events, Misty always gives 100% and goes the extra mile. On behalf of the City of Saco, the Harbor Fest Committee, and the Camp Ellis Community, thank you for your kindness, hard work, and dedication in all that you do for our city and our community. Thank you again. And then... Oh, you're welcome. The, the next item is the 2025 Spirit of America Award winner, which is Carmen Dame Garanski. Whereas Carmen has served for several years as president of Saco Meals Program, of the Saco Meals Program, a community organization that provides vital support for Saco and its surrounding communities; and whereas on Mondays and Thursdays Carmen can almost always be found donating her time in the Parish Hall of the Most Holy Trinity Church Hall; and whereas in addition to the time Carmen spends each week unloading donated food and working with volunteers, Carmen also spends additional time attending meetings, planning menus, writing grant applications, and updating the organization's website and social media. And whereas Carmen never seeks attention for herself but deserves recognition for all the work she invests in the community and on behalf of its residents. Now therefore, again, on behalf of Jody L. McVeil, Mayor of Saco, and on behalf of the City Council, hereby resolve with sincere gratitude and appreciation that Carmen Dame Garanski is recognized for her commitment to the community with the 2025 Saco Spirit of America Foundation Award, signed this day, the 27th of October, 2025, by the Mayor of the City of Saco, Jody L. McVeil. I additionally like to thank Dorothy Schlob, sorry if I pronounced that wrong, the Monday Coordinator, and Christine Perrault, which is the Monday and Thursday co-coordinator. All right, we'll move on to item four, which is, whoop, I take that back, item five, which is committee correspondence to council. Is there any correspondence from councilors? All right, we'll move on to item six, which is the public comment session. Do we have the signup list? I'll get the signup list. So we'll, we'll begin with the signup list, and then if anybody else would like to speak, we'll move on to those. Members, please, when you come up to the podium, cite your name and address for the record, and try to keep it a three-minute timeline. So the first person on the list is Kelly Archer.
Hello, everyone. Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. Thank you for taking council agenda action on citizens' grievances tonight. The Saco Code of Ethics Conduct Complaint Form and the Executive Sessions Contract Zones and Lucia Kimball Health's Trust validity. Citizens look forward to transparent and open council deliberations and detailed written reports for the official record. Counselors, your constituents deserve your courage to right the wrongs of staff. Think about it. For years, the common denominator for all our grievances is that staff-endearing trustees ignored, circumvented, or and/or violated local, state, and federal laws, thereby creating critically severe risk and liability to the citizens of Saco. I understand your need to protect risk management, political pressures, and minimizing publicity. However, in the executive session going forward, do not be complicit in anything but following the law. No gray areas. Be mindful of any attempt to minimize the severity of deering trustees selling land outside of council and charter rules, or by their non-compliance of administrators' requests for documents during a council ad hoc committee investigation. Do not be complicit in staff creation of a contract zone project when pre-2021 contract zones are null and void. At 4:05 today, the city clerk confirmed with Inga Brown that her foyer on contract zones are now available to police pay and pick up. Prior to the executive session contract zone consultation tonight, have you received and digested its materials as requested by citizens? Is it fair to have the city attorney consult with you their contract zone findings when this important contract zone foyer is now finished and available, available just two hours before the council meeting tonight and executive session? Does council even receive executive session packets days prior for their due diligence and equal and fair participation? The city administrator's boss is the council. Counselors, due to the continued and numerous staff errors, you must direct the city administrator to, to perform their job and bring forth compliance from all department heads. Do not ignore charter, local, state, and federal laws, nor put a Band-Aid on legal issues. I look forward to council agenda deliberation regarding purchasing policy and the code enforcement office roles, accountability, and the enforcement fines and/or court compliance of repeat offenders. Thank you, and I would also like to state, please find a way to get creative to help these neighbors that are sitting behind me in their emergency situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, we have Lisa DeRozers.
Lisa DeRozer, 18 Pinehaven Street in Saco. I spoke last week, so I just have a couple of things to say, just hoping that you'll hear our voice, and it will matter. I just want to start out by saying, we live in Maine for a reason. It's a pine tree state. There's a reason we don't live in California, a palm tree state. We couldn't afford it. We don't make as much money in Maine as they do in California. They're charging them $1,000 a rent a month in California. They want to do that to us in Saco. Please hear our voice. We can't afford it. It started out at $200, $300 a month. Now it's over 500, and then they want to go up to 650, 750, 850. There are people that own homes in Saco, their own home, on their own land, and they're paying less than what we're paying in that park. They are taxes. For what? Please hear our voice. Thank you. We need help.
Thank you. Next on the list is Lynn Johnson.
Hi, I'm Lynn Johnson, and first of all, I'd just like to say that what we get from the park is, are no, closer? Oh. Okay. What we get from the park is what we can do, what we can't do, which is understandable, you know, to a certain extent. And it's just, we get them in notices, and getting these notices, like I said, is all well and good, but we're not getting anything in return. They want us to make sure we keep the grounds clean, all the things that you want to do yourself anyway, keep your, keep your grounds clean, which aren't ours. I mean, we're raking leaves off a lawn that really isn't ours, but of course, we're gonna do it. You know, there's trees. Some people have had trees that probably should have been trimmed, not necessarily taken down. Nobody wants to see every tree in the park taken down, but I mean, they can be trimmed. People have had it on their homes, gone right through, you know? We have to, apparently, we have, we're, we have to pay for that through our insurance, which we all have. So it's, it's just, in the, we have animals in the park. We have turkeys. You'd have to see them to appreciate them with the little young ones, you know? There are deer. I've never seen one, but I have heard that there are. So, you know, taking, taking all that away, all the woods away, we're, we're losing a lot of, you know, of a country feel, I think, you know? What we get from the park, like I said, is, is nothing, and it's, it's hard for me. I, I wasn't gonna talk, but it's too important, I think, for me not to express how I feel, and I think a lot of other people feel the same way. Blue Haven isn't Daytona Beach, you know? Blue Haven isn't Disney World, Disneyland. It's a small community, and it was something people could afford when other places were out of reach to them. Well, other places are not only out of reach to us right now, before, but they're out of reach right now. It's, it's getting quite expensive with everything else going up, and the kind of raising the lot rent, I mean, $100 in one month for some of us, and some of us are looking at even more than that come December. So, I mean, I think this is a small community, and I think everybody kind of watches out for each other, you know? And we'd like to all be able to stay here. It's beginning to look a little difficult to do that, the way things are going. And the bottom line is, I think everyone should be able to call somewhere home, and myself and the rest of the people call Blue Haven home. And, you know, we're a little worried that allowing it to go, you know, higher on the rent would hurt.
Next on the list is Barbara Skorsky.
Hi, my name is Barbara Skorze. I've lived at Two Miserved Circle in Blue Haven for 15 years. I moved here because it was affordable and a safe place to raise my two girls. Thirteen years ago, I was assaulted at work, and my life changed immediately. Even though you can't see it, I have a brain injury that affects my memory and causes vertigo. I am limited in what I can do each day depending on auditory and visual stimulation, the weather, and just what my brain and the loose crystals in my ear canals want to do that day. I don't have the ability to ever work a regular job again. I've been on workers' comp without an increase in pay for these 13 years, and I'm doing the best I can with no foreseeable raise. My home is small, easy to care for, and a safe and comfortable place to be. Without my partner Barb, I'm not sure I could afford to be here. Our rent already went up $35 at the beginning of the year, and now it'll be another $145. Rounding up, that's pushing $200 extra per month. When you're on a fixed income, paying for Medicare and rising electricity and food costs, that's way too much, and for what? The cost increase doesn't cover any increased value, as you've already heard. We have widowmakers and dangerous trees in our yard and throughout our neighborhood. We love the trees, but so many need to be limbed up. I worry about dead branches falling on me or my home and either adding to my brain injury or killing us. We've had to pay over, close to $900 for insurance deductibles and to cover damage because of their trees. They pick up lawn and leaf bags and plow the roads, but they pile snow at the ends of our driveways when you've already cleared your driveway. We're supposed to keep our yards maintained and fix the damage from the snow plowing. Grass seed is an extra expense that they would like us to have due, and we shouldn't have to incur. When Michelle owned the park, she would fix that damage for us. We pay an additional amount for water now, too. We have terrible water pressure. We don't even have enough water pressure in our home to run our ice maker and our refrigerator, and every time they add a new mobile home, that even decreases even more. We have rules, like we need to keep the white skirting and maintain its cleanliness, and that's difficult for a lot of older people to do between power washing once or twice a year. We're not supposed to have boats or campers or canoes on our lots, even though we're renting this lot. We live here, Mainers who want to enjoy Maine and all it has to offer. My neighbors shouldn't have to pay additional amounts to store their equipment. I just worry that if they can raise the lot another $145 this year on top of the 35 per month, when will it go up to 750 like the new residents are paying? And what will stop them from raising it to 850, 950? So many of us are barely making $1,200 a month. How can we survive? Mobile Home Park should be affordable living, not for corporate greed. Thank you for listening.
Next on the list is Sarah Belanger.
Hello again. Sarah Belanger, 31 C. Pheasant Road. The first thing that I want to say is I want to, on behalf of myself and I'm sure the rest of the Mobile Home Park, the Mobile Home Park, to say thank you, to you, for spending the amount of time that you've spent listening to our stories, our concerns, our worries, and just kind of taking it all into consideration and listening to us and hearing us. Second thing that I want to say is when we talk about astronomical issues that come apart, when you're especially older, we just spent $9,000 on a new water heater and a new furnace over the last two months. Took a chunk out of that retirement. So increased lot rents is just making it a lot worse. The other thing that I want to do is I want to speak about the maintenance crew that we have in the park. I've, I've heard a lot of issues that we have for safeties and other things within the park. the park. But the park is maintained by two, now three gentlemen that go out and do all the plowing. They clean up the, the leaves and the twigs and all the stuff that they do out there. But I think what we need to do is we need to remember that these guys are also, they can't speak what maybe they want to say because they work. They collect a paycheck from the people who own our park. So therefore, I don't think that we should harm them in the whole maintenance issue because they really do work hard and they have two parks to work at. They did finally just hire a third person, but they get a paycheck and the person that pays them is the one that tells them what they can and cannot do within the park. So again, thank you very much, and I appreciate everything that you've done for us.
Thank you. That completes the sign up list. If there's any. You're right, I did. Well then, Barb, Barb Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Barb Thomas. I'm a disabled veteran. I live at Two Reserve Circle in the Blue Haven Community. I've lived in Blue Haven Community for 13 going on 14 years. I moved here from Southern Illinois, and since my move to Maine, I've come to love this place and its people. A couple of years after I moved here, I was diagnosed with cervical cancer. And with no family nearby, myself and my partner had to depend on the kindness of others, our friends and neighbors. Those were tough days financially, physically, and mentally, but we made it through and eventually we began to remodel our home and thought of older age, disabilities, and retirement. I've built friendships, met many of my community by living on a busy corner lot, helped neighbors through tough times also, helped them with projects, whatever they might need. We have retirees, the elderly, young families, people with disabilities, veterans, and first time homeowners. As a committee member for the Blue Haven Community, I've heard many of their stories. Our stories are different in life path choices, but the ending is the same. The park was affordable, within our budgets, quiet and safe, a hidden gem of a community that is often not known by others. Some grew up in the park and moved back later in life. All of us bought homes in the park because it was in our, within our budgets and there was a foreseeable future for retirement. Most of us purchased older homes at that time and have kept our places clean and updated to the best of our abilities. We keep our rented lots mowed and taken care of, also to the best of our abilities. We love our community and may want to live out our lives there. But such drastic increases with nothing in return and with no foreseeable ending to these rate increases make retirement no longer possible for some in our community. Those on social security or disability have limited and fixed incomes that never match the increases in the real world cost. CMP has promised increases this winter. Heating fuel will be out of reach for some. Medical insurance may double or triple for some in January. Groceries have become outrageous. We have everyday bills such as car insurance, home insurance, medications. What are we supposed to do? Where would you have us go when we can no longer find cuts in our bit, our budgets to pay rent? Some will end up on the streets. I've heard those stories, with no available help for them today. Others have no idea what they will do. Some are already selling their homes, and others are thinking of selling. Our city is facing the same problem as all others all over this nation. Affordable housing is dwindling, cost-urizing, help isn't available, and there seems to be no answer for fixing it. I hope that we can work with the Blue Haven LLC to mediate for reasonable rent increases and for a safe community, and ask the city council to help us by passing a moratorium that will allow us to have time to work through this. I would like to thank our city council for listening to our community and considering an emergency moratorium to assist us. I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Right now, that completes the sign up sheet. There's anybody else that would like to speak? Come forward to the podium and say, cite your name and address, please.
My name's Reverend Robert Henry. I live at 24 Pheasant Road with my lovely wife Natalie. I too want to thank you for hearing our stories. I won't give you another one, but it is rather ironic. I retired St. Patrick's Day, and then the letter came. So it was just kind of a, I don't know the description of it, but it was ironic, the timing of it, you know? I don't have the ability to get overtime, so, you know, fixed income, same as many. But I just wanted to say that I think the logic run that I would like to take is that just because something's possible doesn't make it prudent. Shortest verse in the Bible is Jesus wept. A lot of people have tried to interpret what he may have wept over because it's not really elaborated, but I do know that he wept over a sadness of a city. Similar here is, like was said, we're a community, you know? We're, we're a group of people. I get it, it's called mobile homes, but who's kidding who? I mean, we can't, most of us can't move our homes. I mean, it's just kind of a misnomer, as it were. I know, like, I don't want to overstate the obvious, but whoever bought us, I don't even know who it is, but whoever bought us, they bought us to make money. I get that. But I'd like to repeat that just because something is, to them makes perfect sense, I would ask that they would consider us as people and that it's common knowledge that you live in a mobile home in lieu of buying a, a regular house, as it were, because of feasibility, financial feasibility. And I know that, like I said, you've heard a litany of different stories and accounts and stuff, but I would just ask that you would consider those that are on a single fixed income, disabled veterans, because those are the people that the, the government is to champion when they can't defend themselves. You know, I, I am in a position where it's going to pinch me, but, you know, not as pinched as others, but I just want to make sure that my voice is heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Natalie Henry. I live at 24 Pheasant Road and Mobile Home Park. I have been there.
We have been.
We have been there, excuse me, for about 14 years, and I do love the community. I love my neighbors. Lately, it's extended because of this moratorium that I'm getting to know so many more people, like 150 more people. And we all have like minds about what a fixed income is. I have social security and that is all. I had savings and it's dwindling down, almost nonexistent. My husband, like he said, is now retired, and we're going through our savings, and it's really scary. And that's without the extra money taken out of our accounts. I do want to also say that the water is not good. It's good for plants, it's good for pets, if you want to give them that, but it, I don't drink it, and I'm spending all kinds of money on bottled water, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. But I love the community, I love the people, and I want to stay there. It's my home. I believe the Lord gave us this home. It's so sweet but beautiful, and I just really would like you to have compassion on us. The amount of money I take home, well, it's directly deposited in my account every month for social security, is about the same amount we'd be paying for the rent. And I'm not even talking about the taxes. And then, so we'd be living on just my husband's amount, and he's retired. So it's very limited. I hope I'm in the time limit, but I just want to thank you all for hearing, and please have some compassion because we're wonderful people. I can speak for all of us. We care for each other, and we love Saco. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other speakers this evening? All right. If there's nobody else, I do see that Mayor McVale has arrived, so I think it's, sure. So with that said, I, I will relinquish the chair and the mayor can preside over the meeting. I guess I'll call a short recess.
And for covering for this evening, I unfortunately double booked myself with the Cub Scouts of PAC 311 tonight. They're working on their citizen badges and asked me to come speak, so I do appreciate the assistance. And good evening, everyone. All right, so we are at item number seven this evening, and that is the approval of the minutes dated for October 6, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by?
Me.
Counselor Edwards, thank you. Any discussion or comments on the minutes? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Okay, that now takes us on to item eight, and that is the consent items this evening. There is one item, and that is the confirmation of the interim city administrator's appointment of the city planner. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion or removal of this item? Okay, roll call vote. Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Congratulations. Item number nine, action items. We do have two items under this evening. Item A is the emergency moratorium on the mobile home park lot rent increase, and that is Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counselor Johnston has requested that the city enact an emergency ordinance to establish a temporary moratorium on mobile home park lot rental increases outlined in the attached emergency ordinance. I will go ahead and read that.
Yep.
City of Saco hereby ordains the following declaration of emergency. Whereas multiple residents of mobile home parks have shared testimony about the increased lots, lot rents, and the dire impacts that increases have on their life, health, and property over several nights of public comment at city council meetings in the fall of 2025. And whereas such large lot rent increases are exceeding the financial means of the mobile park renter, especially in the 55 plus and older communities. And whereas most mobile home park lot renters do not have the ability or financial means to move their modular home and improvements to an alternative park or location. And whereas most mobile home parks are consistently viewed as an affordable housing option for lower income and especially seniors on fixed incomes being negated by the extraordinary escalation of lot rents and the comparison to other price indices. And whereas it is observed that there is enactment of a state law, formerly LD 1723, an act to amend the laws governing manufactured home communities to prevent excessive rent and fee, fees increases, statute Title 10 MRSA, Section 9093-B to establish an immediate and permanent lot rent base. And whereas due to these increases, certain lot renters may become unhoused due to the affordability of these rapidly escalated lot rents. And whereas the state of Maine has passed a law Title 10 MRSA, Section 9093-B that has directed the Office of Policy Innovation in the future to draft a model rent stabilization ordinance by December 31 of 2025 for a consideration of adoption by municipalities to address the housing stability. As it, as it's related to lot rents, and whereas pursuant to city charter, Section two dash, or 2.10, the city council may adopt an emergency ordinance affecting the health, safety, or welfare within the city when an emergency is declared. And whereas based on the foregoing findings, the city council has determined that there is an emergency need to address the rapidly increasing cost of lot rents in mobile home parks. Now, therefore, the city council hereby declares an emergency pursuant to city charter, Section 2.10, and hereby sets forth an emergency ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium on mobile homes or home park lot rent increases within the city of Saco. City of Saco Temporary Moratorium on Mobile Home Park Lot Rental Increases: Purpose and Findings. City council finds that there is an emergency affecting life, health, and property for the housing stability for certain mobile home park lot renters because of rapidly escalating lot rents, and therefore, an immediacy to address the manner of lot rent increases to foster stabilization of housing within mobile home parks. And the city seeks to examine the pending model ordinance pursuant to Title 10 MRSA nine, or Section 9093-B for lot rent stabilization for mobile home parks, scheduled to be available by December 31, 2025. Prohibition. A, the city of Saco shall prohibit any lot rent increases to mobile home parks from the date of adoption to the expiration of this emergency temporary moratorium ordinance on or before December 26, 2025. Violations and penalties. Any person violating this emergency temporary moratorium ordinance shall be subject to the enforcement actions and civil penalties of Section 1-18 of Saco's Code of Ordinances. Each lot where a violation occurs shall be considered a separate violation. This ordinance shall be enforced by municipal officers of the city of Saco. The effective date, this emergency temporary moratorium ordinance shall take effect immediately upon adoption by the city council on October 27, 2025, and shall stand repealed as of the 61st day following the date of its adoption, December 26, 2025, unless reenacted or repealed by the same emergency ordinance procedures enacted October 27, 2025, to take effect October 27, 2025. Now, be it found by the city council that an emergency exists and therefore be it ordered that the city adopt the emergency ordinance for temporary moratorium on mobile home park lot rental increases, and that during the time the moratorium is in effect, the city shall prohibit any lot rent increases in mobile home parks from the date of adoption to the expiration of this emergency temporary moratorium ordinance on or before December 26, 2025, unless reenacted or repealed by the same emergency ordinance procedures. I move to approve the order.
Thank you. A motion has been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion or comment on the item? Any discussion or comment on the items? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McVale. Just had an epiphany here. Tonight's the night of the council listening to its citizens. We have your item, the moratorium, and four others sitting on our agenda this evening. And I think for me as a public servant, that's a very energizing opportunity. So before I cast my vote in favor of this moratorium, I wanted to look out into the audience and thank you all for everybody coming up to that podium and sharing your stories. And as hard as it was, I want you to know how impactful that is. And I think I can speak for all of us here on the dais. This is why we serve. We get elected to serve our citizens, and I'm just happy that you felt strong enough to come up and tell us what you thought and ask us for help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Hatch, for saying that. I do have a concern, I guess, for the emergency moratorium and definitely for its goals. But as I understand it, the rent increases are scheduled to take place in December. If I understood what Counselor Johnston read, the state ordinance doesn't take effect until the end of December, but this emergency moratorium will expire on December 26, prior, I think, to the state law taking full effect and coincident maybe with some of the rent increases. So for the goals, I'm concerned about the timeline a little bit. And so just maybe if the city administrator or mayor could help me out. At this point, because emergency ordinances are limited, I think, to 60 days by charter, the nature of the emergency moratorium can't extend beyond that. And at that point, I think we have two options. One would be to renew the emergency moratorium at that point, and I think that'd be the next council's job. Or we could do non-emergency procedures, correct? And institute a longer-term moratorium through a traditional three-reading process. Is that correct?
I'd like to take that. As far as the timeline, it can be extended. The council would have to take another separate action, though, for the 61 days. Longer-term ordinance could certainly be done through a three-reading process, but if that was the case, I would think that you'd want to see what the state is coming out with for the model draft as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to follow up on that, so maybe our best option today is to pass the 60-day moratorium. Then in, I don't know, four to six weeks, council can take up where the state ordinance is, gain some more insight. We can ask these fine folks to come back out and tell us what's happening, and we can renew the emergency moratorium if needed at that point.
Yes, we would plan to bring this back on, I believe it was December 15th's meeting.
Correct.
Where it is the day after Christmas, we want to make sure that we are ahead before the expiration. So the plan was to bring it back on the 15th.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Johnston, did you have your?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's what my thought was on this, right? Like get immediate emergency relief, but then understanding that there's probably likely potential that we're going to have to extend the emergency. Or, you know, I think the better route is probably to give a 180-day moratorium to figure out, because I have no idea if the state will be on that timeline. So certainly, as you said, Counsel Berman, it'll be up for the next council to kind of keep this in.
Unfortunately, there is no comment at this time during the motion. Sorry.
Yeah, so it'd be up to council to kind of keep this in the forefront. I guess just overall, thinking about this, you know, as Counselor Hatch indicated, like I've been impressed with the feedback we've received. It's impressive to see, again, an entire community come together and bring their issue to us and ask us to act on it. I think generally speaking, I tend to, I won't say shy away, but have my own personal exceptions to government stepping into or intruding into private property rights. But I view this particular issue vastly different than I would say, like say, rent control for an apartment building or what have you. The main reason being, as some of these members of the audience have stated, you know, we may call them a trailer park or a mobile home or what have you, but you can't easily pick up these property which they own. It's an odd situation where they own the property, but they don't own the land under it. So in many ways, they're almost prisoners to whatever that rent is charged on the land because, as I stated, even if they could, that's the other thing to think about, even if they could pick it up, move it somewhere else, they can't move anywhere else in the city of Saco because we have one area that's zoned for mobile home parks. So where are they going to go? So, you know, with those thoughts in mind, I definitely view this as an emergency, given, again, the vast amount of testimony about their abilities to pay. You know, I think most my life, I think we all recognize that mobile home parks have been, well, I've always recognized it, is really one of the few affordable options that is a pathway for true homeownership for young people, families, you know, veterans, seniors. So given the housing situation we're in, it's, you know, it doesn't really behoove of council not to act, in my opinion, because, you know, where are these people going to go? Long term, you know, I think it would probably also behoove the city council to look at this more robust manner than just a moratorium and trying to address the long-term issues if the state doesn't act. But I guess, you know, with that said, I wholeheartedly support this emergency moratorium. Thank you.
And I will let counselors know that I have been informed that the owners are already in communication with some of the members of the committee who have been authorized by the park to speak on their behalf. So communication is open and has already started, so it is not a matter of being behind the eight wall and just starting right now. So that is a positive move forward with this and the 61 days. Counsel Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in support of the moratorium. However, I also need to say that I don't begrudge a company for trying to make profit, but there are situations that seem to be unaddressed with these particular owners from the testimony that was given by the people who live in Blue Haven. And I think that those things need to be reconciled. I also think that, as Counsel Johnston was saying, we do need to take a larger look without going to the full effect of rent control to somehow look at issues of predatory pricing for apartments and rentals and parks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Roll call vote. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counsel Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Okay, we do ask that. Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item B, and that is the follow-up from the Saco Citizens Grievance Review Committee acknowledgment and receipt of item number three of the final report, and that is Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor McVale. On July 28, 2025, the Saco City Council accepted the final report of the Saco Citizens Grievance Review Committee in order that the follow-ups be scheduled, be scheduled, period. Recommendation number three of that report was to, and I quote, "request that the city administrator direct staff to enhance public instruction through municipal communication channels on a semi-annual basis regarding how to access and use the ethics violation reporting mechanism outlined in section two, subsection two of the Code of Ethics/Conduct." And city staff has provided an update about this matter at City Council September 22, New Business Review. Be it ordered that the Saco City Council acknowledge receipt of the Code of Ethics/Conduct form and further move that recommendation, number three of the final report is now complete. I move to approve the order.
Motion has been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion or comment on the item? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McVale. Just a couple of clarifications, if I may, to direct to our interim city administrator, if I may. If this is approved, which I hope it will, I'm assuming that the communication that's reflected in this vote will be queued up with communications twice a year. You're nodding because I know that was going to be the case, but I wanted to get that public. Thank you. And then I also think that beyond this vote, we need some type of SOP regarding follow-up steps. So if somebody does in fact submit a request for investigation, that we have some sort of written process that somebody can look at and see what's going to happen. And I just want to make sure that that's in process as well. So those are my two questions.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to address that?
Yes.
So the communications will be queued up on this. It'll be included as part of the newsletter, and we will also continue to do our training on Code of Ethics Conduct as part of our planning board training, as well as the city council training during the public sessions. As far as the SOP for the form, we are working on that internally. We will be including the new city administrator in those discussions as well so that he is well aware of what we come up with and has the ability to provide input on the internal SOP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing anyone. Roll call vote. Counsel Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Parks?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Counsel Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Okay, that completes the action items for tonight. And moving on to item 10, we have new business, and that is information from the Main Water Company of the Unified Rate Schedule. And Deputy Administrator, we have with us tonight?
Thank you. We have representatives from Main Water Company tonight. We've asked them to come speak with you and give you some information on the unified rate schedule and the proposed changes. Main Water Company has done a good job sending out information to everyone in their bills, so this might be a duplicate info session here, but we just want to make sure that we got it out publicly and shared it as widely as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Yes, good evening. My name is Mark Vanoy. I'm the president of the Main Water Company. And I'm wondering if you've all been distributed the notice. Thank you. You have. Excellent. So what we are working towards is unifying our rate structure across all of our divisions across Maine. This is not a revenue increase for the company, but rather it is a look at how rates should be set based on the cost of service of serving, and then designing a rate design that applies those economic principles to the rates. How that works out in Saco itself is that you see a slight decrease in the residential Where the rate design really changes, though, is in its fixed versus volumetric charges when you look at larger-sized meters. So traditionally, the two-inch and the 5/8-inch meters in Saco were very close to the same fixed charge. There should be more of a linear relationship as you increase your size a meter rather than... So what is happening here is that we have a kind of a linear relationship as we go up in the meter size, switching away from this kind of bellied curve that has existed So as you look at that, there are some customers, and we're hopeful those customers will contact us and work through their particulars as far as how this rate design might impact individuals. And lastly, I would say we've also held the fire charges, the town fire charges, the same through this process. But I'm happy to take questions. It's a technical subject as far as rate design goes.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments? No, not seeing any.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for the update. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that completes the new business section for tonight. Moving on to item 11, that is the administrative update. Deputy Administrator Prescott?
Thank you. Curbside leaf collection begins November 10. Saco Public Works will begin its annual curbside leaf collection on Monday, November 10. Residents are asked to place filled paper leaf bags curbside by 7:00 a.m. on November 10 to guarantee pickup. Crews will start at one end of the city and work through each public street until all are serviced. Each household is limited to 20 bags, and crews will not return for bags placed after November 10. If you miss our curbside service, Saco residents can dispose of leaves year-round at the Saco transfer station for free. The wastewater team recognized with several awards. We are proud to share that our team at the Water Resource Recovery Department has been recognized for their round-the-clock work providing reliable and efficient sewer services to Saco residents and businesses while protecting the local environment, including the Saco River. This fall, they were honored with several awards from prominent state and national wastewater associations exemplifying the high quality of service they provide to the community. The Main Water Environment Association gave Saco's WRRD the prestigious Richard Goodenow Award for their outstanding service to the community, excellence in operations, maintenance of Saco's water resource recovery facility, and dedication to the protection of Maine's water quality. According to this association, the Goodenow Award is given in recognition of the efforts of the facility's personnel to maintain the best quality effluent treated wastewater discharge. We also did highlight that Howard Carter was the Water Environment Federation President in the news story that went out with this as well. Assistant City Engineer Kyle Mundorf was hired for the role of Assistant City Engineer. His previous role was with the Public Works Department as the GIS engineering technician. He brings a positive attitude, valuable field and construction experience, and well-rounded knowledge of city infrastructure. Kyle holds a Bachelor's of Science in Mechanical Engineering from the University of New Hampshire. His skill set will complement the team well, and we want to welcome Kyle into this role. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McVale. Deputy interim city administrator Prescott was generous in mentioning who won the Award of Appreciation, Howard Carter, but she's too humble to mention it, so I'm going to do it for her. Emily was a past president of Maine WEA, and she was recognized for that service. And the only reason I bring it up, both for Howard and for Emily, I think what they show is such a dedication to the city in terms of stretching their wings and creating a network of professionals that goes well beyond city limits. And having been a beneficiary in my own profession of that networking effort, I can only tell you that it brings not only dividends to the individuals who are, you know, getting connected throughout, in Howard's case, across the country, and in Emily's case, in the state of Maine. We should encourage that, and we should feel fortunate. We have other employees do the same thing. So I just wanted to make sure that we publicly not only acknowledge that, but as a council, continue to encourage that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will actually point out to note, I was able to congratulate James, who works there. He's actually a Cub Scout PAC leader in the community as well. So I saw him tonight, and I was able to congratulate and congratulations Emily and Howard as well, and the whole team. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 12, that is council discussion and comment. Any counselors wishing to speak? Okay, I would like to point out, I hope everybody has seen the beautiful banner behind us tonight. We had students from Saco Middle- tonight. We had students from Saco Middle School here last Friday for their kindness day. We had a great group of students. They came with treats and thank you cards for all of the city staff. They wrote inspiring messages in chalk out on the sidewalk, and we had a group, and then they would come up and were able to tell us what they loved about Saco. They were very enthusiastic. They love walking around and meeting everybody, and it was just a pleasure to have them. So thank you to all of the teachers and the chaperones and everything that brought the kids out, and just for the kids themselves for being here for the day. Thank you. Okay, moving on to Item 13, that is executive session. Is there a motion? Councilor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor McPhail. We had ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6e, consultation between the municipality and its attorney for three items: contract zones, intercreditor agreement request, and Lucia Kimball Health Trust.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Councilor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Roll call vote. Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Parks?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes at 7:34 to enter into executive session, and we will be in the city administrator's office?
So moved.
Motion made by Councillor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Edwards. We'll call vote. Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Parks?
Yep.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to exit executive session six zero at 9:02 PM. Is there a report?
No report.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item fifteen. That is an adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Councillor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councillor Edwards. We'll call a vote. Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Parks?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Hatch?
Yes.
Councillor Hewitt?
Yes.
And Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to adjourn at 9:03. Thank you everyone and have a great evening.